This evening for our city council meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Here.
Lorick?
Here.
Mingham?
Here.
Mansfield?
I was a little excited.
Nichols?
Paulson?
Here.
Here.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Star Redden, representing First Congressional United Church of Christ. Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Please join me in prayer if you are so called to do so. Creator, we come with respect for this land that we're on today and for the people who have and do reside here in Pocatello. We acknowledge the native peoples on whose ancestral homelands we are so blessed to gather, as well as those diverse neighbors who make this their home here today. We're grateful for all of our ancestors and lessons taught, knowing that we didn't make it to this point on our own, but rather together we rise to the greatness that is becoming Pocatello. We ask for your presence here tonight as we go about this important work that you have bestowed upon us as elected officials, as city employees, and as citizens at large. Open our minds to hear the heart of what is being said and not what we think is being said. Open our eyes to see that we are part of a greater family coming together, not as adversaries, but rather sojourners on the path to a greater city. And finally, let us close our mouth when we might truly hear, so that we might truly hear, until it is time for our voice to be heard, knowing that there are many who have no voice or feel that their voice has been drowned out. When we speak, or act, or vote, let it be for the greater good of all the people, in the many names and ways that we call upon you. Amen.
We will move to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the special city council meetings of March 6th and April 18, 2024. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of April 16 through 30, 2024. C, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for March 2024 showing cash and investments as of March 31, 2024. D, Pocatello Development Authority reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jim Johnston to continue serving as a member of the Pocatello Development Authority Board of Directors. Jim's term will begin May 1, 2024, and expire May 1, 2028. E, council decision annexing approximately 33 acres of land located along Craft Road and Gaethje Road. Council may wish to adopt this decision annexing approximately 33 acres of land located along the Craft Road and Gaethje Road. Subject property will be zoned residential medium-density multifamily RMM with concurrent comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential, commercial, professional, RCP. F, council decision final plat approval for Greenfield Meadows Division 6 subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the subdivision of approximately 2.93 acres of land into nine lots generally located east of Greenfield Meadows Division 5 subdivision and north of Crestview Estates Division 4 subdivision, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through F as outlined in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mingham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Four is proclamations. We have four proclamations tonight. They'll be written in this order Municipal Clerks Week, Councilmember Mingham; Drinking Water Week, Councilmember Lurick; Historic Preservation Month, Councilmember Cheatham; and Older Americans Awareness Month, Councilmember Paulson. Go ahead.
Proclamation. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas city clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the municipality through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024 as Municipal Clerk Week. In Pocatello and further extend appreciation to our city clerk Connie Kendall and Deputy Clerk Aubriana Resendez and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform.
As she told me she wasn't going to walk up here, and I'm afraid of her, so I'm not going to make her, but I am going to ask her to say what she did.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the proclamation on behalf of myself and Deputy City Clerk Aubriana Resendez. We are so appreciative of this recognition, and we just love to serve our citizens and the City of Pocatello. Thank you.
Oh, it's me. Excuse me. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shone a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5 to 11, 2024 as Drinking Water Week in Pocatello, and further encourage all citizens to recognize the value of water to our community and seek opportunities for education regarding and involvement in local water issues.
A lot of people, people just started to walk up here. Welcome to say a few words.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council, in supporting our mission and joining other communities nationwide in supporting Drinking Water Week. The City of Pocatello Water Department is marking Drinking Water Week by engaging the community in understanding the vital role of clean, safe water in our daily life, including its importance for public health and environmental protection. Drinking Water Week also acknowledges and celebrates our hard-working water professionals whose expertise and commitment ensure the delivery of high-quality tap water every day. I'm joined here today with one of our hard-working water professionals, Levi Lusk. He's one of our key educators, and so I'm going to turn over the time to him to kind of talk about our 30th Annual Open House that we'll be hosting next week.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for this opportunity. Like I said, my name is Levi Lusk, and I'm a utility data technician for the Water Department, but I also serve as the education coordinator for that department. And like Justin said, in celebration of Water Week, next week, Monday through Thursday, we're going to be doing an open house. It's our 30th Annual Open House. It's open for the entire public to come and see what we do with water and how we treat it. We're going to be joined by multiple representatives within the city, both Water Pollution Control, Sanitation, the Science and Environment Division, as well as a representative from the Bannan County Landfill to talk everything water, where it comes from, what we do with it, when we use it, how we treat it, and all the good stuff. So definitely welcome the public out to join us in celebrating water. That's also an opportunity for us to educate the youth during that week. We're going to invite, we invite all of the third graders within the Pocatello and Chover School District to come out and learn all about water. So we definitely invite you guys and appreciate the support and this effort. So thank you.
What's the day and time?
Well, it's May 6th through May 9th. So it's Monday through Thursday.
All day?
Yep, it's all day, so basically eight to five on all those days. On Tuesday, we're going to be a little bit later, so if people who work and don't get off work until five, we're going to be there until seven o'clock on Tuesday, the 7th. So yeah, definitely make sure that you come out and check it out. So.
Whereas across the country, community-minded Americans are revitalizing historic neighborhoods and downtowns into places we want to call home. These vibrant, inclusive communities nourish our bodies, support our families, and feed our spirits. And whereas at the heart of each revitalization effort lies a unique cultural heritage, one that's inextricably linked to the historic building where people live, play, and work. And whereas historic preservation helps community leaders unlock the potential of their historic fabric to promote economic and cultural prosperity, foster equity, and encourage sustainability. And whereas we believe all Pocatellans deserve to engage with their history in our community. Yet as a community, we have work to do to fill in the gaps of our cultural heritage in order to tell a more complete Pocatello story. A story that stirs us all to take pride in our shared heritage and inspires those to create an even more perfect union for generations to come, all while acknowledging and confronting the harsh realities of our past. And whereas Pocatello's historic sites are irreplaceable, from icons of architecture to archaeological sites, these physical reminders expose the diversity of our experiences and the history we share. We seek to empower neighbors, partners, and individuals to protect historic sites in the community. And whereas with the support of the community, we desire to drive investment in our historic places through changes in policy, catalytic rehabilitation projects, and innovative place-making work where preservation and economic development aren't just compatible but integral to building a stronger community. And whereas the theme for this year's Preservation Month across the nation is People Saving Places, which seeks to shine the spotlight on everyone doing the work of saving places in big ways and small. By celebrating People Saving Places, their work will inspire others to join the national effort to preserve our historic places for generations to come. The story of places is the story of all of us. With the community's support, we can connect Pocatellans to their past and to each other and help inspire a better tomorrow. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month in Pocatello, and call upon the people of Pocatello to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I think you missed your calling as a voiceover actor. That was amazing.
You used to be on the radio.
Yeah. So I'm Tabitha Butler. I am Vice Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and thank you so much for acknowledging this. Historic preservation is integral to Pocatello. It embodies our city's scrappy spirit, honoring its rich and seedy past while embracing its ever-evolving identity. Preserving historical sites not only safeguards our heritage but also fosters our sense of community pride and connection, enriching the cultural fabric that is so important as our community grows and develops. We are the railroad, the Triangle District, Historic Downtown, the university and its surrounding neighborhoods. We have diverse religious roots, and we are a blue-collar community colliding with a college town on the traditional lands of the Shoshone-Baknek people that make who our community is today. We cannot focus on embracing only one part of our history, but all parts of our history, the great and the tragic, as it defines who we are today. Thank you again, and with that, the Historic Preservation Commission has had an extremely busy year. We will be doing a ribbon-cutting for the groundbreaking or point-breaking on the Brady Chapel next Tuesday, May 7th at noon, which we invite you all to come to with the chamber. We've also been doing a lot of work to upgrade and change our design standards for Historic Downtown that will be coming to the council for approval later this summer, and we've just begun working on a new historic preservation plan for the City of Pocatello as well. So thank you for this acknowledgement. We appreciate it.
Whereas, May is Older Americans Month, and this year's theme is powered by connection. To emphasize the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection for the well-being and health of older adults in our community. And whereas, Older Americans Month is a time to recognize and honor the more than 10,000 older adult residents of Pocatello aged 60 and older for their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas, through the wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, the City of Pocatello recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and support older adults may need to stay involved in their communities, reflecting a commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Older American Month in Pocatello, and encourage every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens and promote programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults.
My name is Mike Hershey, and I'm the Director of the Area Agency on Aging here in Pocatello. Thank you, Mayor Blad, and City Council, for this incredible acknowledgement of Older Americans Month. This proclamation serves as a reminder of the invaluable contributions older adults make to our community every day. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to be a part of celebrating the wisdom, experience, and resilience of older Americans. I look forward to continuing to advocate for their rights and well-being in our town and beyond, and thank you again for highlighting this special occasion for older adults in our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There was a lot of "whereas's" in there, so I appreciate the council doing that. Agenda Item Five, Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On May 9, 9:00 AM will be a city council work session. May 16, 5:30 PM, a council clarification meeting, a regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Then on May 23, at 9:00 AM, will be a budget development meeting. Other events, May 4, the Portnif River Valley Fund Run Series begins with the Spring Scamper. For more information or to sign up, visit the city's website or contact Parks and Recreation. The citywide cleanup on May 4 will be a citywide cleanup start at Caldwell Park. From 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM, there will be a pancake breakfast. On May 7, a ribbon-cutting for the Phase 1 restoration of the Brady Chapel at noon at 12:00 PM. At May 11, a city auction at Primetime Auctions. May 13 through 31, Brooklyn's Player Ground at OK Ward Park will be closed for resurfacing. May 12, Mother's Day at Zoo Idaho. Mothers receive a half-off admission price when accompanied by a paid child. May 20 through June 2, the Community Recreation Center located at 144 Wilson will be closed for renovations. Zoo Idaho is now open seven days a week. Dog licenses will expire June 1. Half-priced dog licenses are being offered during the month of May. Licenses may be purchased at City Hall or at the animal shelter. And a big congratulations to all Idaho State University graduates. And if you're bored in Pocatello, it's your own fault. Okay, we will move to Agenda Item Six. It is a public hearing. Public hearing, Contract Zone Map Amendment, Pocatello Quinn LLC. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Pocatello Quinn LLC for a contract zone map amendment to rezone a portion of Building Number 12 within the Titan Center from industrial to commercial general to allow continuation of indoor recreation activities. Following a public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. And council, has there been any ex parte communication?
No.
Okay. Then the applicant.
My name is Scott Lloyd, and I work, I'm a principal at JHS Architects, and I'm acting as a representative on behalf of IRG and Pocatello Quinn LLC. As you kind of explained, this is in regards to Building 12. The current zone of the building in question is light industrial, and to accommodate a new tenant, Portnif Valley Soccer Club, we're requesting a contract zone amendment to be modified to commercial in lieu of the light industrial. And the reasoning for this is simply because it doesn't fit within the framework of a light industrial, works within a commercial zone, and so that's pretty much the extent of it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Council, any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Staff, Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. Just real quick, a public hearing again was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of April 10, 2024, at which time the commission recommended approval of the Contract Zone Map Amendment, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 1702.170 of Pocatello City Code with the, with three conditions that are outlined in the findings of fact and recommendation. All proper noting was made per Idaho Code and municipal code. No written comments have been received by staff as of this evening's meeting. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, Mayor and Council.
Questions, Council? Okay. You mentioned there has been no written comments that we haven't seen. Madam Clerk, has there been any in your office?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for testimony, any supporting the application? Any uncommitted to the application?
Nikki Taisom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 8321. Thank you very much. I oppose this because, one, you're dealing with children and youth, and it is an industrial area. There are other opportunities for them to have an indoor place to practice or have games or whatever their goal is. And so that's my main concern, as well as, you know, traffic that might be going in and out of there commercially versus families. And then also, like I said, there's other businesses in town that provide those services that we need to support. And also, I'd like to know what the conditions were. Thank you. Sure. Name of the case.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Scott, I would give you a chance to rebut that if you would like to.
In regards to other accommodations provided, I really can't talk to those extents, but regarding the public safety of students or of children and families within the industrial zone, as you're well aware, the Titan Center is being altered and modified. And the particular zone that we're in question is right off of another parcel that has been rezoned for commercial against Quinn Road. And so this building is right adjacent to that area, and so I think it fits within the framework of what we're attempting to do. The building, the partial building, portion of it, the way that we currently have it is that it's separated, is that all parking and all access to the building for the soccer facility will be completely separate and disjointed from the other portion of the building. So as far as safety and concerns, I feel like we've met those criteria that I feel justify it.
I just want to, also, I know the Titan Center very well. There were, for decades, at least two decades, we've had a soccer facility in one of those buildings. We had a gymnastics gym in that same building, and we also had a number of businesses intermixed with that as well. And so I don't see this as much of a change personally.
Right. And on top of that, hockey as well, right?
Hockey as well, so.
We feel like it still fits within that construct as we've seen in previous iterations.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I don't think I've ever been in this building. I've been in some of those buildings. Can you give me a rough idea of the size of this particular building? The scale of these things is absolutely monstrous.
Yeah, so like we're looking at a building that's about 150,000 square feet, and so that's a significant building. And half of it will be used for this soccer facility. And so it was previously used as an industrial building, and so it's very wide open and has a lot of ability to accommodate what we were looking for.
Does, if I may follow up, does that allow a full-size soccer field indoor?
Unfortunately, no, but we can do kind of the smaller practice-sized fields and what we'd see at the park just down the street, those smaller, the little kid fields could easily be accommodated inside those spaces.
So you have a restriction of the support beams that prevent it from being wide enough for that?
Right. It's almost four acres under one roof.
Yeah, it's pretty big. Yeah.
Big location. Any other questions? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, the silence before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Lurick?
I move that we approve the Contract Zone Amendment as requested by Pocatello Quinn LLC as outlined in Agenda Item Number Six with the three conditions.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mingham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, Public Hearing, Vacation of Right-of-Way Approximately 0.63 Acres Located at North at north, at the north end of Craft Road. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Savage Transload Network LLC to vacate the public's interest in a plotted right-of-way, R.O.W., located near the north end of Craft Road encompassing 0.63 acres, more or less. Staff recommends approval of the petition with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, have you had any ex parte communication on this? The applicant.
Good evening. It's Mayor Blatt, council members. Thank you for your time, and thank you to your staff for thoughtful review and consideration of our application. My name's Brian Chieney. I'm legal counsel for the applicant. And I'll keep my remarks brief. I thought the staff did a great job in their summary. This issue arose due to a recent acquisition by our client of the two parcels adjacent to the subject right-of-way parcel. If you look at in your packets from the staff report, approximately page 11 is this diagram here. This parcel here lies literally in between the two parcels that were acquired. During the due diligence process, when we were purchasing the property, we learned unbeknownst to our seller that they didn't actually own this parcel. It's actually owned, entitled by Bennett County.
Oops.
So in conversations with the county in trying to acquire the parcel, we learned through communications between the county and the city that the property was annexed into the city and is actually subject to a public right-of-way in favor of the city. So that's what brings us here today, to vacate that right-of-way and ultimately hopefully work with the county to acquire that parcel as kind of an odd lot excess parcel. For the reasons stated in our application, we don't think that the vacation of the right-of-way will impede any other third party's access to their properties or result in any damage or harm to the city if the right-of-way is vacated. Our understanding, having just acquired the property, is that the property's been used by the prior owner as if they owned it for 20-plus years. So for those reasons, we respectfully request that the right-of-way be vacated. Any questions?
Questions, council? Okay. Thank you, Brian. Staff?
Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. As noted, an application has been submitted by Savage Transload Network LLC to vacate public's interest in a right-of-way located near the north end of Craft Road entailing 0.63 acres, more or less. Records show that the subject right-of-way was platted in 1924. Vacating will not impede adjacent property owners from accessing their property. Intermountain Gas officials informed staff that a 4-inch high-pressure gas main is located within the existing 50-foot right-of-way and therefore requests a 20-foot wide utility easement be maintained in the event the council approves the petition. Staff recommends approval of the petition with the three conditions listed in the staff report, including the latter 20-foot easement. All property noticing was made per Idaho and municipal code. No additional written comments have been received by staff as of this evening's meeting. This concludes my presentation, Mayor and council. Happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor, in the report of staff, there's mentioning of two property owners, Jeff Hamstein and Great Western Malting, but on the picture we were given, I didn't see where their property would be affected by this.
It wouldn't.
But it's not in the picture. Where is their property in relation to this?
Well, Great Western would be to kind of the north.
The northwest.
Northwest. And the other gentleman, I believe, is to the south.
Okay.
Believe. But, yeah, so I did have those individuals with Great Western Malting and two other individuals that inquired about it. They, I have not heard back from them within concerns. You may notice that there were, I did notice, notify the property owners actually twice. There's certified mail and then regular mail. And so I don't, I haven't heard anything from adjoining property owners.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt while he's up? Thank you, Matt. Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for anybody supporting the application? Anybody uncommitted to the application? Anybody opposed to the application?
Nikki Taisom, General of Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I'm opposed, I'm questioning, I haven't been able to look at any maps to see if this has anything to do with the other situation that you guys did with Craft Road at the previous meeting. So I don't know if they coincide. And with regard to, I'm about cleaning things up. So if there is a right-of-way and the city has owned that or the county, will this company be purchasing that property, that stretch of property? Because that has been a private property. And so those are my two questions and why I would oppose it, because I oppose the other craft situation that you guys had a meeting on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, I would offer you an opportunity to...
Happy to, real quick. I don't know what the other Craft Road issue is, but as far as relinquishing ownership, the city doesn't actually own the property. It has a right-of-way statute allows for a vacation of right-of-way in circumstances like this where it's not been used as a public right-of-way for decades. And in fact, it is mandatory to approve the vacation if the requirements are met.
Brian?
Yes.
Is your client, your client is okay with the easement for Intermountain Gas, correct?
Yeah, so I hoped to have, to show you the survey of the property, there's actually an already existing 20-foot easement that encumbers the property. If, if the line is somewhere different than that, my client doesn't have any plans to build any buildings on there, so we don't anticipate that being a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Council? How do you like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve the vacation of right-of-way approximately 0.63 acres located at the north end of Craft Road as outlined in Agenda Item 7, along with the three conditions that are associated.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we will move to Agenda Item Number 8, is Motorola Station Alerting Change Order Fire Department. Council may wish to consider a request by the fire department to approve, to approve execution of a change order for the fire station alerting project unauthorized to mayor's signature on all appropriate documents subject to legal department review. The cost of the change order is $126,833. Funding for the fire station alerting project was previously allocated by the council using funds received through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we make a motion on this, I'd like to hear from Chief Ahern what this specifically is for, and so that way the community kind of knows why we're looking at 100-some-odd-thousand dollars.
Thank you for the question, council member, Ryan Ahern, fire chief. This is something that we had intended to try to execute early in the project, but we had to have Motorola come on-site during the main project to do the site walk to determine the configuration and the equipment that would be needed for this leg or this portion. This installs display boards and zone lighting and zone dispatching in the stations. Excuse me, the zoned dispatching and lighting makes it so that only the apparatus or the units, ambulance versus fire truck, that's being alerted would be notified in the event of a call, and the other ones would be undisturbed. That's a better investment in the health and wellness of our people than alerting the entire station for a call that they're not required to respond on. And then the incident, the display boards and the turnout timers will speed response because they'll provide better information to the crews while responding on the calls.
So, follow up. So first thing, I want to say that I commend you guys for the good work that you do, and I think that this is a great project because it'll help with the efficiency of you guys being able to respond the way that, that we need you to. And prior to this, you guys were, you had a few calls that were being dropped consistently. And so thank you for your due diligence in trying to maintain the safety of our community. Also, I note that in, in our packet, I see that there was a contribution from the county to facilitate this project being completed.
Yeah, they contributed $200,000 to the entire project.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Super. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, my question might be better directed to our Public Works Director, Mr. Mansfield, since he's kind of been in charge of the ARPA funding project that we've had the last couple of years. I'm, I thought we pretty well spent that money. I didn't know there was another $126,000 available for a project like this. So I guess I'm asking about the availability of funding.
Good evening, Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director. Thank you, Councilmember Cheatham. So when this originally was approved for the station alerting, the number was?
600?
$600,000. And then the bid came in less than that, plus with the county's contribution, we're well below that 600,000, even with this change order.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. I have heard from some of our firefighters with the issues with the current system of not being able to get the rest that they need because they're worried about hearing calls and that kind of thing. So I look forward to this being better for them. They can do their jobs better if they're able to sleep and, yeah.
There's a lot of research out there right now on sleep and fatigue in first responders, and we think that this is going to make that better.
Yeah, so I'm really glad to, I mean, for a lot of reasons, but particularly to take care of our, our employees, so thank you.
Thank you.
Super.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the change order totaling $126,833 for the fire department Motorola Station Alert System.
Second.
Okay, we have, I was a tie there and...
Pick your favorite.
Hey!
All right, Rick, I guess. Now, we'll...
Wait, Rick's your favorite?
We have a motion by Mangum, and we'll, I'm giving the second to Paulson this time, not because he said, "Pick my favorite," though.
I see how it is.
Yeah. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
You guys make it hard. When you tie, I have to choose, and then I have to remember who I chose the last time, so. We'll move to Agenda Item 9, Resolution Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Council may wish to adopt a resolution approving updates to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board to reflect current membership of the committee and reiterating the general statements of duties.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 9 as outlined.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick.
Before we vote, can we hear from the director on why these changes are so pertinent? I mean, we have a lot of people in our community who care about their animals, and they'd probably be, like to know what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, council, Chris Abbott, Animal Services Director. We made these changes to kind of open it up to more ideas, more people having different groups there. So we felt that making these changes for individual groups would allow that.
So for clarity, it saves, it's a safeguard to, to protect from monopolization of one agency versus another.
And more ideas. It opens it up for more ideas to help the shelter out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, An Ordnance Annexing Approximately 33 Acres of Land to Extend the Pocatello City Limits Along Craft Road and Gathie Road. The annexed property will be zoned residential medium-density multifamily RMM with concurrent comprehensive planned land use map designations of residential, commercial, professional, RCP. Council, how do you wish the ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 10, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mangum.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. Soon as it loads. There we go. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning approximately 33 acres of land located along Craft Road and Gathie Road. Said property more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bennett County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-215, providing for said land to be zoned residential medium-density multifamily RMM with concurrent comprehensive planned use map designations of residential, commercial, professional, RCP. And providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item and three minutes per person. We'll go ahead and get started. Keith Spiegel.
You don't have to sign in a second time.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we got you here.
Okay, perfect. The King James Bible says in Romans 9:13, "As it is written, Jacob, have I loved Esau, have I hated. Cannot have love without hate, and you cannot have hate without love." Just a scratch of the Bible will reveal this. God never tolerates evil, and He doesn't expect us to either. With that said, I came here last time with a valid warning from a reputable source that our women and children were in danger. This source was from the European Union, and not one of you guys even checked my source to validate it. So I decided what I would do is once or twice a week, I would Google search knife attack or rape or sexual assault or whatever the case might be, and then I would document that on that board back there. The board quickly filled up with names like Muslim illegal immigrants, asylum seekers. What did not fill up was any such persons as KKK or white supremacists. Those attacks did not happen. But on that board, I wish I had it up here, were just a lot of people that across that border were sent back, came back, false names, false identifications. They came here and they committed evil. Now, there's three on there that were not on that, excuse me, there are three that were not on that board, one you're probably familiar with. We had our own, very own brush with Muslim multiculturalism right here in Poki, didn't we? We had a white female ISU student sexually assaulted by a Muslim student. In West Jordan, Utah, 177 miles away, two asylum seekers, ages 24 to 29, enticed a 13-year-old girl to go out and party, got her so drunk she passed out, and then they raped her. But don't worry, they got time served and probation, so maybe we can invite them over. But then there's my, the most horrific, little nine-year-old Luna of Sweden. She was taken...
She was taken into the woods and tied to a tree, using her own shoelaces and brutalized. She will never walk again. She will never talk again. She will never have children. Her parents will never get to see her walk the aisle. Her attacker was a 15-year-old Abushi Shimasi Kamal, an Ethiopian Muslim. The school hid half of the problems with this kid because they were afraid it would affect his asylum status. Here's the part that made me think of you guys. When they didn't investigation into his room, they found pornography, lots of it. And I was wondering, how much pornography did he get that at his library? I just wondered that. So my question to you guys is, is Pocatello going to be a sanctuary city? What are you going to do when one of our daughters becomes like Luna here? Are you going to say, that's the price we were willing to pay so we could say we're multicultural? Is that what you guys are willing to pay? You guys willing to put a chalk outline around someone's daughter? These people aren't being vetted.
Thank you. We'll move to Sarah Keys. You didn't put a topic, Sarah, on here.
My name is Sarah Keys, and I am here tonight as a resident of Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I'm here as a taxpayer, as a Christian, and as a mother. Every year, Idaho alone sends $15.5 million to Israel, not to mention the additional billions of dollars that the US has, has sent them in just the past few months. $15 million could provide housing for over 1,800 families for a year, could give over 5,400 children free or low-cost healthcare, and do even more good for our community that is in desperate need of those things. Instead, our taxes have been used to murder over 35,000 civilians in Palestine in just seven months, including over 14,000 children. It has gone to deliberately bomb schools, hospitals, churches, and playgrounds. Israel is bombing playgrounds and killed doctors, journalists, and aid workers. The longer that this genocide continues, the more very real issues of antisemitism and Islamophobia affect our local communities and make the people of our town feel unsafe. Mass protests have erupted throughout major college campuses across America, demanding an end to this slaughter, and over 100 American cities have already passed resolutions calling for a ceasefire. All of us have a responsibility to respond to this crisis, to ensure that our taxes are not being used to commit war crimes against unarmed civilians, and to make sure that all citizens of our city feel welcome and safe, regardless of race, religion, or ethnicity as outlined in Pocatello's welcoming and inclusive city resolution passed in October of 2020. And you may be thinking to yourself that this is an international issue and not a local issue, but we have to stop pretending that global issues are not local issues, especially as the genocide in Gaza is threatening to start a broader war. With Iran now being dragged into it, there is a very real possibility of the US being directly involved beyond funding the entire Israeli military, funding that comes directly out of Pocatello. It's taking money away from our families, our schools, and our overall well-being. We have to realize that change happens first at a local level before at a national one, as history has proven to us time and time again. So I implore you to take the first step to deescalate by introducing a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and for immediate divestment from Israel. I'd love to discuss this further with any one of you afterwards, and I leave you with these closing thoughts. If not you, then who? And if not now, then when? Thank you for listening.
Okay, Nikki Taisom.
Nikki Taisom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I am a peacemaker. I oppose the problems versus the person. Everybody's a priceless child of God on this earth, our Father and Mother in Heaven. We are commanded by our Father and Mother in Heaven and Savior to seek understanding and sue for peace, as I have loved, you love one another. We are not to offend or turn away a little child, and our children are in heritage of our Father and Mother in Heaven, and are be kept pure globally. This incidence here with our children, including with foreign nationals, including, I don't care if they're Islamic, the drug cartels, pride witchcraft covens, whatever, it's going on here, even our local people in churches, schools. We have got to come together under those basic truths I just referred to. And scripturally, Ephraim will stand with Judah in the last days, United States with Israel, who we got our scriptures from. I do not approve of any war. I don't approve of anyone causing harm in any form of immorality or witchcraft or violence or drug. That's where we've gotten into this mess. We are peacemakers as a nation. We've desecrated that role by getting to the point we are now by calling it inclusiveness. And one is with humanity. We are one. We are all supposed to be united as sons and daughters of God, our Father and Mother in Heaven, not divided. Does not matter what color we are, where we come from, our economic status. We're supposed to be stewards over each other and this earth and the freedoms and blessings we've been given globally, and it's become desecrated by the wrong choices. And it's been inspired by the Antichrist. There is good and there is evil. And I'm calling everybody to the table, I don't care who you are, to lay down your arms. No harm of any kind is inspired of our Father and Mother in Heaven or Savior, or what America stands for, our flag, our nation, our pledge of allegiance, our Declaration of Independence or preamble, none of it. Our Monroe Doctrine forbids what we're dealing with in this country and globally. I call you to lay down your arms, whatever they are, whether it's your pride, your pride, your position, your money, your status, whatever your moral issues are, whatever your drug addiction, whatever your Xbox game is, nobody's winning at this. And it takes us all, look to the children. If it offends or turns away a little child, we've been born by the Savior Himself, we better repent, or we will regret the day we were born. And I share that humbly with all sincerity. Walk the cemetery and look at those baby graves and those children's graves and those youth's graves, this town and the new section. That's a testament of this town.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you. We'll move to Rachel, is it Steinkeert? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for hearing me today. I'm hearing a lot of repeating themes this evening during our audience portion, which is, a lot of us are starting to be upset about the violence, especially violence against children in our own community and how we're seeing that reflected globally. I'm here to urge the City Council of Pocatello to begin the process, to pass a city resolution for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Palestine. And before you tell me this is not a local issue, I'll explain why I'm here. For the past six months, I've been calling my senators and state representatives nearly every day, begging them to push for a ceasefire and to stop sending billions of dollars to Israel for more weapons. They return my calls with a standard response that they will continue to support Israel even as it's a country that's currently slaughtering innocent people. Their hands are tied, they say, by their, by their donors, many of whom, by the way, are the same super PACs and lobby groups and defense manufacturers who profit from this genocide. I've gone to our city hall meetings to speak to our, my legislative representatives. Same thing, they say their hands are tied. I have called and messaged the White House urging the Biden administration to do the same thing. Same thing, their hands are tied, he's tied with Netanyahu. I've organized to work out an uncommitted campaign to peacefully and democratically show the Biden administration that we're not happy with his current policies, but the Idaho Democratic Party does not allow uncommitted or write-in in the caucuses and the primaries. So all around, we've either been ignored or told that it's not their issue, and that's why I'm here with my most local, my most direct representatives, you guys. And you can tell me that Palestine's not a local issue, but I live here, pay taxes here and work here. There are Jews and Muslims and students and veterans here. We are all watching these horrors. We are watching children bleed out on hospital floors, get buried under rubble. I have a soft spot for children because I work with children. I'm a teacher, I go to work every day haunted by the images of this violence. If you haven't seen them, it's because you're not paying attention and you've turned a blind eye. Pocatello is a city where I live. It is a city full of good, honest, hardworking people who live by their conscience, who try to do what's right, and I'm here doing the same thing. Pocatello has a strong moral compass. I cannot turn a blind eye to this. And while all my other government officials have ignored us, I'm here asking you. So yes, the genocide in Palestine right now is not strictly an issue related to Pocatello, but my question...
Thank you, thank you very much. Move to Idaho. You've changed your name to La, not Lorax?
I'm both.
Oh, of course you are.
Of course I am, yes. Famous in one, getting famous in the other.
Okay.
So, I have just mainly from my speech, free speech here tonight, I just have a few questions, okay? One, you have some property that the city owns and you acquired some time ago at 2405 Garrett Way. You now have a new sign up there, and at the exact location of your new sign, there were tons of radioactive processed materials. My question is, where is it? Accountability. This is stuff that I'm also including in my question. Did you have permission to touch it? You move it? Store it? And where did you store it? Where is it? Accountability of dangerous materials. So that's my question tonight. You gonna at least answer something, Brian? Like, when can I go file for this? Freedom of information?
I'm not gonna answer anything tonight to you, because it's just not true.
Well, it's a good free speech, right? I have the right to ask a question. You don't have to treat me as a human being or a person of this country and answer any question, but I asked you a question, and that one, we're going to publicize because we need to know where that is. Okay? Thank you. It's been fun and delightful. Glad to be back. It's gonna be a nice year once the snow melts.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Yes.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Mansfield said at our last meeting, or maybe it was a couple of meetings ago, that we passed a welcoming resolution in this city about supporting diversity and inclusion. That's the city we are, and those are the values we stand for and believe in. And I am offended and, and absolutely cannot and will not tolerate the racist stereotypes and slurs that we heard at the beginning of this period, from the, Items from the Audience period. So I just wanted to reiterate that Pocatello is a, is a welcoming city, and that does not represent who we are.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.